This conference will now be recorded.
He got the message.
When you're ready.
Oh, I am ready.
Can I call the election commission meeting to order on March 1st?
I don't know what's going on. I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to jump on my other computer.
Okay, you're, you're not hearing us?
This is the grant.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
You're all set then, Bill?
Ready to go.
I think he's just, I think he's one of the callers now.
Okay.
Oh, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Are you good, Bill? You can hear us?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good to go. I'll have to jump back on. For some reason, my camera was showing the side of my head.
Okay. All right.
Go ahead, Anna, um, uh, go ahead.
You already called it to order, right?
I did, yeah.
Okay, so that was at 5:46 PM. So we just need to approve the minutes from October 5th, 2020. Um, this was from when we appointed the election inspectors for the November 3rd election.
I make a motion to approve the October 5th, 2020 minutes as written.
Second here.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, say nay. Okay, eyes off. Okay, uh, the next thing that we have on our agenda is to approve the temporary precinct consolidation resolution for the May 4th, 2021 election. And just a heads up, we will have to do this again for the November election. Um, so we are projecting this to be a low turnout, um, election for May 4th. So, um, in order to save costs, we are consolidating. And the, um, the requirements or the, the maximum amount of people or registered voters that we can have in two precincts is 5,999. And, um, if you look in the resolution that I sent you, precincts three and six total 3,188. And precincts four and five, um, combined is 2,803. So we are well, well below that number. Um, so that's, that's all I really have on that. Um, so we still have the same three voting locations that we did before. We always have Aplex, St. Anne's Parish Center, and First United Methodist Church. So we won't have to send any, um, registered voters, any cards indicating that their location has changed. Because they still go to the same place.
Very good. I have no issues with it. Um, I, I move we, we approve the, it's a resolution as written.
Yep, it doesn't have a resolution number, um, because it's a resolution of the election commission. Okay, uh, Mayor made the motion?
Uh, I second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, hearing none, that is approved. Does anybody have anything else?
No, you'll just, I'm assuming they'll just, uh, make that announcement, uh, at our regular council meeting prior to the election day. Would that be common?
I can do that.
Are you sending out a press release or something, I suppose?
Um, I'd have to go back and see what we did last time.
Maybe the last time we didn't because we didn't want to confuse anyone because they're basically going to the same place. Um, really, I, I think average voter or any voter, even myself, wouldn't even realize that it's.
Right. So in precincts, um, four and five, that's over at First United Methodist Church, um, the two precincts are basically in one big room right next to each other. So that one is no big deal. Um, at St. Anne's Parish Center, the two precincts are in different rooms, but we'll put up signs that it's in the same room.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then no changes at the Aplex.
Yeah, so if, like before, if you think it's gonna cause more confusion than it's worth, then, um, then it's probably not necessary to, to really do anything then.
Right, yeah. I think we kept it that way, just to, like you said, to avoid the confusion.
Okay. I have nothing else.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Move or adjourn?
Okay, second. We are adjourned at 5:52.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, you can cut the recording and then we'll start it back.
This conference will now be recorded.
There's a little bit of feedback. Okay, there we go. All right, uh, good evening. Welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of March 1st, 2021. Call the order, please.
Councilwoman Hess.
Councilwoman Hess here.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell here.
Councilman Noah.
Councilman Noah here.
And Mayor Walagora.
Mayor Walagora is here. Thank you. Uh, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next up, approval of the, uh, agenda this evening. If someone would so move.
Councilman Noah, I move we approve the agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, second.
Councilwoman Hess.
Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noah.
Councilman Noah, yes.
And Mayor Walagora.
Mayor, aye. And, oh, sorry, thank you. Um, any modifications to the agenda? I believe, um, Mayor Pro Tem has one.
Yes, um, I would like to add under the consent agenda, agenda for Chief Jet to be able to order, um, the police vehicle that we've already approved, um, so he can get it here.
So the patrol vehicle budget amendment, I believe, is. Agrees with that wording, just vice.
Thanks, we'll add that as 7F.
And, uh, before we vote, or, thank you, Mike. Um, and before we vote, just for clarification, if, if you could, um, release the, release that to the media, um, because it would have ordinarily been in the packet, in case they have any questions.
Okay. Okay, so Councilman Noah, that was a second on that?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noah?
Councilman Noah, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
And Councilwoman Hess.
Councilwoman Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
Any other modifications to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none, now move on. Uh, approval of the minutes, regular session and closed session of February 15th, 2021. Anyone on council or staff issues or corrections?
No issues here.
Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. Uh, this is the only time during the council meeting this evening that you're allowed to address council. If you would like to do so, please put a quick chat in the chat window for our IT to acknowledge. And, um, Steve, have you received any such notice?
I see none in the chat window.
And I'll just pause for a second if someone would like to unmute and, and address council. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Next up is the consent agenda. Uh, A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $131,472.64. B is the industrial facilities exemption, 2020 monitoring reports. C is a council appointment of Jason Luther and Jeremy Winterstein to the Harbor Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring March 1st, 2024. D is the bowfishing tournament memo, uh, from Bill Pfeifer, uh, city attorney. F is a budget amendment request for police in-car cameras. And F is the patrol vehicle budget amendment.
Councilman Noah, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, second.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noah?
Councilman Noah, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And next we move all the way down to new business. Is the recycling grant agreement. Rich Sullinger, our city engineer, is here to present that.
Good evening. On October 7th, 2020, the city received the grant agreement for the purchase of recycling containers to be placed in city buildings, city parks, and in the downtown areas. The grant also provided funds for two roll-off recycling bins, the concrete to place them on at the DPW facility. Since that time, in pursuit of discussions with city council, staff has been working to resolve issues raised by the city council to allow this project to move forward. Staff has participated in a meeting of the Alpena Recycling Board and gathered their input on the grant and the impacts the recycling proposed would have on their facility. The recycling board has indicated that the additional materials from the recycling proposed would be able to be handled at their facility, facility without a detrimental impact. They did suggest that we target plastics only for the recycling containers placed in the downtown and park areas to keep the recycling materials as clean as possible without paper and trash being mixed in. The new plastics-only recycling bins will be placed near trash receptacles to hopefully avoid the potential for contamination. The recycling containers within the city buildings would be utilized for plastics. Both paper and cardboard are already recycled from these facilities. City council also expressed concern regarding the cost associated with handling the recyclable materials by the DPW staff. Through the grant, we are proposing to place 40 recycling containers throughout the downtown and city parks. Recycling containers throughout the city parks will be, or can be emptied at the same time as the trash is removed from the trash receptacle in the parks. The frequency for recycling containers to be emptied is unknown and will be dependent on use and volumes generated. Additional time to empty and transport the recycling materials from the parks to the DPW replacement of the recycling roll-off bins will be minimal, but anticipated to add approximately one hour on days when these are empty. The recycling containers in the downtown will need to be added into the schedule for emptying as the trash receptacles in the downtown are emptied twice a week via a contract with our trash hauler. Plus, this will be additional time investment by DPW employees, either summer or full-time, depending on the time of year for picking these up. Depending on proximity to each other and the use of the containers, the time investment could be from two to eight hours per week. The cost is in time spent from other duties as these employees would be on the clock performing work for the city. The recycling containers within the city buildings, city hall, public safety, and DPW will be emptied as needed and stored onsite until they are either delivered to the DPW site for drop-off of the bins or picked up by DPW staff who is doing it now for city hall. Transportation of the recycling bins from the DPW facility to the Alpena Resource Recovery Center will cost an estimated $125 every time they are emptied. Jewel's disposal provides this service to the recycling authority for transportation of their roll-off bins. The frequency of this service will be dependent on the volume generated from the recycling containers throughout the city. Right now, it, it is an unknown, um, but we anticipate that, um, even at, at full use, probably less than $1,000 a year, uh, in cost to have those emptied. There will be a cost to the city for providing this service. It is a step in the right direction to expand recycling efforts in the city. Even if in the future we go to curbside recycling, these containers in our buildings, parks, and downtown will still provide a method for people to recycle. It is staff's recommendation that we proceed with the grant provided by Eagle, which will provide $58,080 towards this $72,600 project. If city council concurs, they would authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute this agreement on behalf of the city of Alpena. Remaining $14,520 would be the city's local match, which is included in the current budget.
Uh, thank you, Rich. Um, anyone have any questions or concerns? I know we've kind of, uh, had some before. It seemed to me that Rich answered, uh, answered them in this memo. But if you still would like some clarifications, please, uh, let us know.
No questions here, Mr. Mayor.
I'm good.
Rich, I was, I guess my only question was, and, and it's really not necessarily about, um, it's still about this, but the, these receptacles that are going to be, um, in the parks and downtown, have you, have you and your staff already picked them out? Do you know what, what, what they're gonna look like as far as being a, kind of a pleasing type of a receptacle?
Yeah, they, you know, we'd like, the ones we looked at were, um, close in nature to the style of the trash cans. But we would, we would probably, uh, we'd get these in a blue color so that they could be denoted from the trash receptacles and be identified as recycling only. But, um, the ones that, when we put the, the proposal together, the grant application together, uh, the costs are based on ones, like you said, that are very similar to our trash receptacles in, in shape and appearance.
Even the ones that are downtown that are kind of fancy?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I don't, I didn't want to match the 55-gallon drums that we've got in the parks.
I didn't think so. All right, um, excellent. Well, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to, um, to, uh, I guess follow through with the grant. Um, not sure what the wording is. I'll let somebody choose.
Um, this is Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. Um, I move that we approve the recycling grant and allow the mayor and, I believe, the city manager to, is that right?
Yeah, clerk.
Oh, the, the mayor and, and Anna to, um, execute the contract.
Uh, Councilman Noah, I support.
Councilman Noah?
Yep, that's me.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noah, I just want to make sure that that was a yes.
That is a yes. I thought you were confirming my second, but yes, that is a yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next up, under new business is the water recycling plant exterior lights bid recommendation with Rich as well.
Good evening. Uh, on February 22nd, 2021, the city received an open bids for the replacement of exterior lights at the water recycling plant. This project replaces 26 existing lights with new high-efficiency lighting throughout the exterior of the water recycling plant. Bid documents were sent to six electrical contact contractors, plan rooms, and also posted on the city's website with two proposals received as listed below. Omega Electric, $6,994, and Thunder Bay Electric, $9,905.35. Adequate funding has been established in the amount of $20,000 in the sewer fund for the completion of this project. Omega Electric has done various projects in the past for the city of Alpena with satisfactory results. The contractor completed a site review and had a firm understanding of the project requirements. This includes evaluation of the need of all existing lights. As part of their proposal, six redundant lights can be eliminated, reducing the cost of materials and providing ongoing energy savings. It was my recommendation as city engineer to award the contract for water recycling plant exterior lights to Omega Electric in the amount of $6,994.
Thank you, Rich. Uh, I don't have any questions. Anyone on council have, uh, questions or concerns for Rich?
No concerns, Rich. I do have one question. You know, the $6,994 is fantastic to see in 20,000. I'm, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, the, the, you know, we were, we're well under budget. I'm just wondering if, since we put that in the plan six years ago, if it was just the cost of the fixtures that came in a whole lot better than what we anticipated?
Yeah, when we, when we originally started looking at this, um, you know, LED fixtures and high-efficiency fixtures were, were relatively new on the market. And the price with competition has come down dramatically. You know, a few years ago, where I was paying 13 or 14 hundred dollars for a, a Cobra Head streetlight, now I can get them down in the $600 range. So you're seeing that kind of reduction in it. Um, and we weren't exactly sure if there was gonna be, need to be some, uh, wiring modifications. That's why we put additional funds in.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. No more questions, Mr. Mayor.
No, I don't hear any more than, um, entertain a motion to award that contract.
Councilman Mitchell moved the city of Alpena to award the contract for the water recycling plant exterior lights to Omega Electric in the amount of $6,994.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, second.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
And Councilman Noah?
Councilman Noah, yes.
Motion carried.
Pretty much. Next on the agenda, new business is to review ordinance number 20-454, excuse me, for medical marijuana and potential changes. And Bill Pfeifer is gonna present that, I believe.
Okay, just, uh, just a few things from my perspective. Uh, first of all, uh, me and Rachel had spoke a while back, um, mainly, uh, as a result of the two appeals that were filed, uh, regarding, um, the licenses that were granted. Um, well, I should say the licenses that were granted, excuse me. Uh, and that sparked a discussion about whether we needed to take a look at the scoring rubric and, uh, whether council wanted us as staff to, uh, uh, make some suggested changes. Uh, I won't go into any suggested changes tonight. Tonight was just to bring it back to your attention to, to find out if there's a flavor from council to do that. And then the second area was to look at the appeals process and see whether we might need to, uh, fine-tune that a little bit. Uh, as council's aware, uh, two of the applicants that were not chosen, uh, did file appeals, uh, with the city council. And one of those, uh, groups ultimately filed a lawsuit. That lawsuit was ultimately dismissed by the court by stipulation of the parties. Uh, but during, uh, those discussions as well, uh, the issue arose about, uh, whether there's any, uh, potential for, uh, changing the cap on the medical marijuana licenses. And if council, uh, decided to consider doing that, uh, then, uh, there would be no reason to, uh, look at any potential changes to the rubric and/or the appeals process, um, because if you increase the number of licenses, um, well, once, I, I, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. If you, if you made it unlimited, like all the other license types, there would be no, no reason to have a scoring rubric or an appeals process. If you decided to increase it, we probably would still need to consider potential changes to the scoring rubric and the appeals process. Uh, so for instance, if you said we're gonna have four licenses and applicants were then, uh, allowed to apply for those other two, and we had 10 applicants, you know, we can only pick two of those. So you'd still need some type of rubric and some type of appeals process. There is a, a trend right now, uh, throughout the state of litigation, not only regarding medical licenses. Uh, there's a real push now, uh, regarding recreational marijuana as well. Uh, and, uh, there's a push now amongst the marijuana industry to, um, uh, try for referendums and/or ballot initiatives in certain communities. So rather than attacking the ordinances that have been passed, uh, regarding the licensing process, they're trying to gather support in communities for, uh, placing it on the local ballot uh, for consideration, uh, in that fashion. I can't tell you all the ins and outs of that, uh, right off the top of my head, but I know there's litigation in several communities. And, uh, also, uh, once again, the Marijuana Coalition of the, of Michigan is really, uh, taking a look at, uh, targeting certain communities. Uh, I have no idea whether Alpena would be one where they would attempt to, uh, gather local support amongst the voters, uh, for some type of ballot initiative. But, um, that's kind of where things are going across the state. In addition to, uh, not only the challenge to our ordinance that ultimately was dismissed, but challenges to, uh, ordinances that are similar to ours, uh, and that have a little bit different language. Um, so there's, there's quite a few of those, and I wouldn't be able to tell you with exact certainty how many there are, but there are probably, uh, more than a handful of them going on in different communities. Uh, and probably as many as in the double digits. So, um, a lot of rancor across the state. Um, obviously, the lawsuit that was filed regarding our ordinance has now been dismissed, so we're not, not concerned about that, uh, at this point. Uh, but basically, I just wanted to give a brief update to council, uh, and see if there was any, uh, movement, uh, towards having staff review any of the issues that have arisen.
Uh, thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. And, um, you may or may not be, uh, still asked for, uh, some questions. Um, I didn't, I guess, I appreciate the, the update on adult use slash recreational use. I didn't really anticipate much of a discussion on that this evening. Um, and I, I'm pretty sure everybody's, um, well aware that my, my position, uh, as far as our limit in the city hasn't changed. Uh, I would still support, uh, having unlimited medical marijuana facilities as we did for the other five. And probably my biggest, my biggest, um, argument towards that is that we narrowed it down, um, so much as to where they could be. I just really don't see that there's gonna be too much of an issue with, with, um, a lot of them. Plus, I've kind of taken a look at the best I could at other communities that have, um, that have gone unlimited. And I, and I just don't see like an overwhelming amount of them. Um, but that's, uh, that's my argument, or that's my, that's my stance on it. And I'll kind of leave it open to anybody else that would like to weigh in. I don't know if you want to go around the table or. And I'll kind of leave it open to anybody else that would like to weigh in. I don't know if you want to go around the table or I guess I could, just so we're not stepping on each other. I'm sure everybody wants to voice something here. Cindy, where are you at with this?
Yes, this is Cindy. Of course, everyone knows my position in the beginning that I was for limited for, I thought, all the right reasons. As we've gone through this process, it's kind of become clear to me that we have built in an almost impossible step with the rubric. It's difficult to carry out. It's no matter how you carefully you judge these things, it's problematic, in my opinion. I think that we have limited the area that these, that the facilities can be. So I would be open to putting it back on the agenda and going to unlimited as well.
Thank you. Mike, what is your opinion on this process?
I think my opinion is going to be the same that it has been all along. I mean, we, we made it through the original scoring. We did have a few bumps on the original appeal process and on the scoring. We've gotten through that. I don't think there's any reason to open it up unlimited. In my opinion, at this time, I'd like to see those companies kind of come in and get started, see where we go, and then review it at that time. So I'm comfortable still with the cap of two. I think we've gotten through it okay. And I, I'm comfortable with, you know, just tweaking a few things and, and and kind of updating that a little bit rather than just blowing the cap right off. So that's just exactly, that's my stance. That's where I'm at. So.
I just, I want to make, I want to ask Bill something really quick. So, so in the event, so to speak towards Mike's opinion, Bill, in the event that we, that we don't take the cap off, how, how, how soon do you feel that we should make any specific changes or put any more time into, into the, into the rubric? And the, and the process that we have now?
Yeah, I, I think if, if the consideration is for us to fine tune the rubric, there, like I said, there are really just a couple of areas that I think city staff have talked about. One is to define more clearly what we mean. For instance, the bladed property is an issue. You know, just to have a little bit more definition to the rubric so that applicants know exactly what we're looking for so that something isn't inadvertently left out or it's not open to, you know, more than one interpretation. And then second, of course, is the appeals issue. So I don't think either one of those will take a long time to make some suggested changes. Obviously, with city manager Smolinski being out for a little bit here, I'm sure she would want to have a hand in that. So I would say probably maybe the first meeting in May would make sense if that's what council wants us to do to give recommendations. That gives us plenty of time to get those in order.
Okay, thank you, Bill. I'm sorry for the interruption. Next would be Amber Hess, please.
Yes, my position on this is, is consistent with what has been since we first started talking about it, that I don't feel that we needed to limit it to two or to have a cap on the provisioning center licenses, especially now you're limited the areas that they can be in. And as the mayor mentioned, even communities that have unlimited don't seem to have an issue of being overwhelmed. But it would give an opportunity for those that maybe have a passion for serving their clients or their patients and wanted to have the best business they can to be involved and then let the market determine, you know. Residents and shoppers will choose where they're going to spend their money, which business they're going to frequent and utilize for their medical marijuana. So I, I don't feel that there is a need for a cap. And that's where I've been the whole time. And I maintain that, that stance. So I would like to see it come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. And Danny Mitchell, your opinion, sir?
I, my opinion is that we still stay limited at two. There, there's a variety of things, but besides that, the, when I was on the planning commission, the, Adam brought forth a study that identified the, the number of population to businesses like this because not everybody is going to have a medical marijuana card or have the need or anything like this. And at that time, it was one shot per five thousand people. So that was one of the first reasonings for it that I went with too. Second of all was we identify whether we have problems or not coming forward. It's probably going to be another year before we actually see these two come up and operational. We don't know what kind of problems are going to come about because of these. If you have unlimited and we do have a lot of major problems with them, then there is no way of putting that genie back in the bottle once you started it like this. The second thing here that Bill was talking about was the possibilities of lawsuits with recreational marijuana and the whole thing like this, whereas the state gave the cities the option of whether they did or did not wish to do so. So I cannot see how a lawsuit could come about for something that the state gave the cities permission to do. Third thing, the ballot initiatives concerning this stuff. Back when we tried to do ballot initiatives above the bridge, the Michigan Townships Associations came to us and says, we are only allowed to have state ballot initiatives, not local ballot initiatives. And so in case something's changed, I would like to know that. But for right now that I know of, there are no local ballot initiatives that could come about on this. One of the other things that didn't make it into the ordinance and it was written up before by the planning commission was a separation concerning two facilities, two provisioning centers that at that time could not be within three hundred feet of each other, property line to property line. Reason I'm bringing that up is because you know you're going to have the one there at the old big boys. While the other person who applied was going to be there at that service station across the street from them, which is well within the three hundred feet of this. And I don't really prefer to sit there and have a, a market share down in one street like this of marijuana shops and such. So to, to really wrap it up in that light there, I, I believe that we should take our time with it, not rush into it because what we do may not be able to be undone. So there we are.
All right. Thank you, Danny. I got another question for Bill as well. I guess my, one of my points I didn't make that I will now, and I, and I really seriously and honestly invite you guys to your opinion on this. But so, so we had a, we developed a rubric, we developed a committee to review them. And we developed an appeals process. And, and we're pretty much kind of looking at directing staff to fix something in just about all of those areas. And so, so now, so by doing so, we've, we're basically admitting that, yeah, it, it was flawed. Okay, at least three areas of our whole process and ordinance are flawed. And, and if that's the case, then my argument would be that we chose, we chose two of six with, with, with a flawed process that we're basically admitting and saying, we, we all know that there's issues that need to be fixed in it to pick, to make it more understandable and more fair. So I just, I really still, it just doesn't sit well with me to have a process that we went through to select two legal enterprises to do business in the city of Alpena while we turn around and say, yeah, now, now that we chose, we need, we need to fix it. I know we don't have to because all of the challenges have been met. But still, still, I just feel like it's, it needs to be fixed. And it's not particularly fair to the two or the four that weren't chosen. But so I invite, I invite you again to, to say, hey, I don't agree with that or you're half crazy or anything like that. But with, so with that said, no one's interrupting me to tell me I'm crazy. So that's good. My question to Bill Pfeifer, it, it does look as though through our, through our comments that, that, that there's a majority of council that would like to move towards taking the cap off of provisioning centers, for lack of better terms. What is the, so what, if that's the case, then what is the process in doing so? Is there, what has to be done to make sure that, that everything runs smoothly if we go that route? And how long will that take?
Yeah, one, one of the members that voted for the cap would have to ask for it to be voted on again. So in this case, either Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, council member Noak or council member Mitchell would have to make a motion asking that myself, the city attorney, draft an ordinance for first reading that undoes the cap. And then it would have to come for first reading, just like any other ordinance or any other amended ordinance. And ultimately, council would need to vote on that, that second reading. But the, the motion can only be made by somebody who was on the losing end of the original enactment of the ordinance.
Winning end.
Yeah, the losing end, the winning end.
I understand. I think everybody understands. I'm sorry. All right, I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave the floor open with a pause for, for that motion, if any of those three would like to do so.
This is Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. I move that we direct city attorney to draft an ordinance to remove the cap on the number of provisioning, provisioning centers allowed from two to unlimited.
Councilwoman Hess, second.
And before we vote, I just had another, if there's any other discussion, I can apologize again. But Bill, anything else in the ordinance or that would have to be changed? Or would it, all the buffers stay the same? Pretty much everything about the, the, the process and or the, the restrictions and things of that nature would stay the same? Is that what you expect?
They would unless, once again, if council wished for something else to be modified, they would have to direct me to draft an amendment. But under the current motion, the only thing that would be considered would be removing the cap on the provisioning centers.
So just, just so I'm clear then, if we wanted some of the language tightened up on what's required with the application itself, can that be a separate maybe discussion? Or tell me?
Well, in, in this regard, if there are concerns about the criteria for licensing, and there are, there are multiple different criteria for licensing outside of the rubric itself. If council wanted staff to bring recommendations back regarding that, that would be a separate motion referring to staff for those potential changes. Because I'm not sure that council's in a position right now to, you know, to specifically direct what changes you want done to the criteria. But that part should just be referred to staff for recommendations. But the cap part could be done as an amendment. Now, if, if ultimately there's staff recommendations and council says, yeah, change these criteria, then that would be a separate amendment to the ordinance. Or you could choose to do that all at once. I guess it just doesn't matter which way you do it. But for right now, I think the only thing that's on the floor would be the amendment from two to unlimited.
Okay.
If, if I might, it may be prudent with Andrea Kears on board now. The ordinance was adopted before she came on board. It might be worthwhile to have a fresh set of eyes look at it also and her, her bring any potential modifications or, or changes back to city council if they're opening it back up.
I, I think that, I think that makes sense. And I think our, I think the, and Bill can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, the motion on the floor is, is acceptable as he starts working on this, obviously, to, to, to have some, have some contact and communication with Andrea as well. What, what's your, what do you think your timetable is on bringing up? Do you want to bring up, would it make more sense and save some time to bring, just so we can look at a clean new version without all of the extra stuff in it that we would have to delve through right now? Could you bring a, a clean version back as a, as a draft? Say, what, what would you be your timetable on that? Rather than, maybe as a draft rather than a first reading? Or wouldn't you ordinarily do that?
Well, as to that one specific issue, if that's all we're going to do immediately, that could probably be first reading at the next meeting because that's just changing the cap. But if we're going to look at those other things, we would need a little bit more time than that.
And I think just from my perspective, I, I think I would, I would be okay with, with doing just that, just so, because it's going to be so much easier for me to, to look at it in its new clean version. And then if that's a first reading, we've, we've got ample opportunity to, to voice at that meeting. If we accept it as it is, or if, or if Cindy or anybody else would like to, to make some changes to anything else. Does, does that sound reasonable?
It does to me.
There's one thing that I happen to notice reading through this. It's under section four, general requirements and restrictions, exterior signing, signage. It did hit me at first, but when I was on the planning commission, Adam brought to us a Supreme Court ruling because under the freedom of speech, which said if you had to read a sign to determine whether it violated the ordinance, then it was unconstitutional. Okay, and so here I see facilities may not use exterior signage or displays with neon flashing lights or similar noxious or intrusive lighting or effects. Facilities may not use exterior signage or displays that contain an image of a marijuana leaf or any other commonly recognized symbol for marijuana or which may utilize any of the following words, marijuana, weed, cannabis, blood, doobie joint, hooch, hash, all these other things. So obviously, the words are there. To determine whether the sign is kosher or not, you have to read it, which then it falls under that unconstitutionality that came up a lot, what, two or three years ago? So Bill, I, I don't know again if, whether things like that have changed again. But I just happened to notice that one, and that one have to come out of there. Well, a portion of it.
Yeah, they, they have not changed since that Gilbert versus Arizona case. So that is currently federal law or federal decision. You, you might remember during one of the meetings when we discussed this because we discussed, we discussed this proposed ordinance quite a few times before we came back with a final version. But that was discussed that as part of that. In fact, I'm, I'm a hundred percent sure that council member Hess raised that. And so it was there. In fact, I think her position at the time was against that language. I, I don't mean to talk for her, but I'm pretty sure that's what her position was. And that was eventually left in. There is a, if there's a consensus tonight that that, that should be looked at and maybe, you know, maybe changed, then obviously we can, we can suggest that. and maybe, you know, maybe changed, then obviously, we can, we can suggest that.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if we're concerned about lawsuits, it's like this, they could sue us over this one too. As it being unconstitutional.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna beat up on myself here a little bit in terms of my profession. Unfortunately, you can almost find a lawyer anywhere to challenge things that might seem unchallengeable to many of us, including myself. But if there's one thing there's abundance of, and that is attorneys who will take on a case if somebody will pay them, regardless of the merits of the case. So, you know, certainly that can happen. I'm not, I'm not discounting that. I mean, somebody could come in that got a license and put up a sign that's not consistent with the ordinance. And we could make them remove it, and that could, that could result in a lawsuit. So that's certainly there. And in fact, I think we, you know, I think we acknowledged that risk during discussions. And, and once again, it was left in. But certainly, if there's a consensus that we need to look at that too, we can look at that.
I would say so.
I don't want to, I don't want to mix up too many, too, too many opinions in case we differ with one motion. So, so let's, I, I think it would be in our best interest to, 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 to vote on the first motion. And then, and then I'll ask for Danny if he would like to make a specific motion. Again, just so we're not going through the entire ordinance right now, because I don't even have it in front of me. I don't, I don't want to entertain like a lot of changes right now. But if there's something specific like that, and you guys want to take care of it right now to save Bill some time, that's fine. So if it's, if everybody's okay with that, and has no other discussion on the actual, on the actual motion that's on the floor, I'll have Anna go ahead and call the roll.
Councilwoman Hess?
Councilwoman Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, no.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, no.
And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Anna. And to, to address Danny's point, my only, I guess my comment on that is I remember us talking about it. It, it was, it, I'm fine with leaving it in there, to be honest with you. I, it's one of those things where I would, I would, I guess in Bill's terms, I would rather acknowledge the risk. That way, at the very least, the businesses that want to move into Alpena know what we want. And if they're willing to challenge it and pay for it, then I guess we would cross that bridge when we get there. I've noticed that the vast majority of them stay away from most of that on their, most if not all of that on their signage and signs in front of the store and things like that already. So I'm fine with it. I just sue not change it.
Again, I'm going to have to argue on that one, because that was something that was brought to the planning commission when it would come up time to renew the sign ordinances like this. And we had to look very carefully at what our wording was in that sign ordinance. And we know that, that what this says is in violation of the Supreme Court. So I can't see how we can just leave it there. I mean, I, I know that in some instances, we're not afraid of a lawsuit, in some instances, we are. But tonight was supposed to be a review of the ordinance, not just handpicked items. It was supposed to be a workshop, at least that was the word that I got off of the thing. And that's the reason that I printed it off and, and I went through it. It's just one of those areas that I thought that, that with what we went through, it's like this, that it should have been shortened and taken those descriptors out of it.
Can I make a suggestion, since this wasn't really listed as a workshop? Kind of.
I'm sure it was.
Well, it's not. We were told it was going to be a workshop, but it's not really listed as a workshop. It's listed under new business. Would it be, would it be maybe in our best interest to do a workshop at our next council meeting? To do, to set time aside just to do this, so that staff knows what direction to go?
I don't have a problem with it, but as she says, review of the ordinance, not just, not just, not just number two or zero or unlimited, that was the review of the ordinance.
I think that's fair. I think Cindy's suggestion is fair, and it falls in line with what Bill had said, that he would have, he would have the first draft ready for, for a review at our next meeting. And, and just to clarify, the confusion is mainly because this started as, in conversations with Rachel, it started as a, hey, let's have a workshop and talk about everything, you know, with, with the ordinance. And then she asked that we, and maybe through talking with Anna and other staff, I'm not really sure, but she asked if, hey, can we just put this on as new business to, to review it, to see, to see what direction council wants to advise staff to spend their time on? And so that's kind of what it, that's kind of how it ended up as just a, just an item on new business, so we could, so we could direct staff as to what we would like them to spend their time on. So that's kind of why I mentioned to Danny that I didn't want to go through the entire, the entire ordinance, because I didn't know. And now, up until a couple of minutes ago, really didn't know what it was going to look like or what our direction was going to be. So we can, we can take it in what, whatever direction you guys would like to go in. As far as fine tuning some other, some other items with it, Danny makes a good point, it's fine. It's a fine point, I just, it's not, I don't necessarily agree with it, but that's fine. He makes a good point. I just wasn't prepared with too many other changes. But if you guys feel that it's going to save Bill and Andrea some time before the next meeting, then I'm, I'm completely fine with that. So I guess just with that one item, as far as the signage goes, if Danny would like to make that motion to direct Bill to take that out of there, I'm fine with that.
All right, what makes the motion? Okay, go ahead, Amber.
And, and reading, and reading that specific about the exterior signage. And, and I understand Danny's position, and I do, and I agree with it. But I also understand the mayor's position. It kind of defines what Alpena expects. So this is kind of one of those things, in my opinion, that if we had a workshop, we could sit down, because maybe it's just a matter of verbiage. Maybe instead of facilities may not use, maybe we suggest that they don't in, in a nice way. Rather than saying, don't, maybe there's another way to attack it, rather than just completely eliminate it. Because if they want to sue us, because maybe it's, you know, limits their freedom of speech, they're going to. But maybe we just suggest that some of it, they don't use. But I guess those are conversations if, and I suppose, you know, if everybody wants to take the time tonight, we can, we can go through the whole thing, but.
I don't have a problem. We can sit here and schedule the workshop, but I just remember us sitting through the planning commission thing when they brought this up. And they were very specific about, we cannot do this.
Yep.
Period. All right? So that's not up to me to make a decision. Well, I will say it anyway. No, that's not how we work, or we shouldn't work. So we, I don't have a problem of scheduling a workshop and, and to go through, because, you know, there are, there were some problems with the rubrics, and there are some problems here as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm just going to chime in here quick. I think I would be more comfortable in a workshop session. I'd also like to, you know, I understand the cap, and I understand the opinions of the other council members who wanted to remove it. But I think that, you know, to be fair, looking at the rest of this, we should probably not only schedule the workshop in the next meeting, but we should also direct staff to basically bring back some recommendations, because they definitely have some ideas of what changes that are necessary within the, the body of the document that need to be cleaned up a little bit. So I'd like to understand their, their recommendations, rather than us just kind of going through this tonight. So that's my opinion, which way we should go is kind of schedule the workshop. You know, I don't even think we need to do a first reading on the very next meeting. I think that we can probably, you know, schedule the workshop, let's go through it, let's get the recommendations, let's take care of the cap and everything all at one time.
One more thing, if I could, a question I have on here. With the elimination of the rubric, would that mean that local ownership would not be required?
We're going unlimited, I'm assuming the whole rubric is out the door.
I would assume so as well.
And so we probably have, you know, would not have a need for a scoring rubric going forward.
Right.
I agree with, with Councilman Noak's suggestion. Like Rich had said, Andrea really wasn't involved when we first made this. And so, so having her and Rich and Rachel have some, if Rachel's back up, but have some time to take a look at this with Bill Pfeifer and kind of bring back some suggestions. And we'll expect to have a, an open workshop and make some decisions at our next meeting. Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so we don't need a motion then? We'll just put it on the next agenda as a workshop?
As, as a workshop, yes.
Yes, please.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And that does it for that topic. So next up is adjourned to closed session. So somebody will make that motion.
Councilman Noak, I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss the proposed litigation with the Alpena Prototype Bio Refinery LLC, American Process Incorporated, and Grand Bio LLC.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, second.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, aye.
And Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
We adjourn to closed session.
Bill, do you, I didn't see anything. So do you expect to have any action when we come out, or is this an update?
Just an update.
Okay, so I'll let our mess, our media and any guests that are still on know that when we return, and I don't know how long that will be, but once we return, we won't be taking any action. So we'll just be returning to this meeting to adjourn. So appreciate it, and see you soon. Wow, you guys are fast.
Giddy there.
I move adjourn. Okay, I move we adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Okay, who made the motion?
I'll second it.
I think they got it all.
Noak is fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Councilman Noak, I move we adjourn officially.
Officially.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, second.
We adjourn, thank you.
Thanks.
Stay home, Anna.
Have a great week.
Thank you.
Yep, see you.